My wife tried that.
We think we can get you a stick, Lori.
Oh, no, I'm busy.
Because the handprints leave marks. Sticks, they can't tell who it was.
Where do I go?
Yeah, yeah.
Alan with the killer dog. Yeah, geez, we haven't seen Alan in some time. How's it going?
Alan, does that dog come from the girl in Ugle Lake? It just looks almost exactly like mine.
It is a little bigger, right?
Yeah, mine's a little bigger.
I didn't know if she'd stolen from there.
And what kind is it? Torpical?
Well, the tortoise makes it.
Pishon. Pishon, or they call it poushon. Poushon.
I still have quite a list of things that needed to be fixed. I know for the lady that bought it. She had hired a building inspector. The list was three miles long. So we compared the bigger stuff first and then it was under the gun and I knew it wasn't gonna completely be fine. Where we live, for a hundred years, a handshake was good. I don't know what's good for you. But I give you my word that everything will be completed.
Well, we had to shut the main. Yep. I didn't go search. It doesn't seem like there was another valve anywhere. We looked for one through the cellar. I couldn't find a valve specific for that, for that, for that. Now, they stripped it. They stripped it outside. They've been trying to, they're working with pliers. It's an older building, eh? I'm sure there's a valve somewhere that could have shut it off. Through the main areas and other than that, it's in the ceiling. We had to go to the main. Yep. There's this door. Yeah, yeah, we shut up the main. Yep. So I got no water in the building at all. Nope. No, but it's, it's basically empty anyway, for the time being. I'll get PJ to come tomorrow, hopefully. And if I need it, then we'll just turn it on for a while. Yeah. Well, you know, they, and I let them know, you know, if you need this, I mean, go ahead. It started with there and then all of a sudden, these guys got aware that there was water there, so. But it's so hard, huh? Use, so it's a hard valve to turn. And there's a handle. I have a handle inside. It's a square valve, also. And they're trying to turn that with pliers and adjustables. Well, no, and what happens? They went too far. Tried to break, tighten it so that it would shut off completely. Now it's stripped, it keeps turning. Just turning.
I get them. I get them for free. You got them for free. You have to pay thirty-five cents for the board. Paperwork.
It's time to turn the air conditioning back on.
Puppy's suffering as much as we are.
I was just.
So it's five-thirty, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our meeting of July twenty-eighth. First article to cover would be the Fledge of Allegiance. So Article Two is public participation. This is the article where we allow the public to have comments for a few minutes. We'll allow ten minutes for this article if we can get it covered in that time. So do we have any questions or anything that we need to discuss under this article? Yep. Go ahead, Alan.
Hey, I'm here for one big reason. I want to know how come Madawaska didn't have a jake brake?
We don't.
It's something that would have had to have come up to the playboard.
Could, next to where our farmer, he had a sign there.
That one gone.
It's gone. This sign is gone. This sign was there for jake brakes.
The police were there when the dog was hiding off. And the sign go down the cage of school is gone. So, what do you?
We can look into it. I know that with ordinance for jake brakes, you have to be pretty specific for the area.
Specific?
Then we have to say from where to where. I don't think you can have a townwide jake brake ordinance. I, we have to look into it, but certainly something.
What am I doing? I want an answer. I got no problem. I got it.
Well, I can't give you an answer tonight.
We're gonna have to wait again, but I'm here for that.
Yep. Great. Anything else? Go ahead.
Can we give this gentleman a timeline as to when he's gonna get an answer?
We can look at the ordinance. We can look at what we have already passed.
That comes under the noise ordinance. Land use codes.
Do you still have the book of ordinances? The police have one or not yet? I'm pretty sure there was one passed at one time.
Yes, you're right. Go ahead.
And personally, I'd have no objection to having the jake brake ordinance applied throughout the entire town of Madawaska. Back settlements included. Main Street with the back settlements. They have other means of slowing these trucks down. And they don't need to be using jake brakes, especially in any residential area whatsoever. My opinion.
So what we can do is we'll see when we have the books. We'll see what's been in the back actions that the board and the planning board may have done. We'll look to see what is lacking. We'll look to see what we can apply. If it's going to be an extension or of the area of coverage for jake brakes. If it doesn't cover the whole town, then it's gonna have to go through the planning board. And ultimately, as an ordinance, you have to be adopted at town, in a public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, if the law was there before, you don't have to do all that. I don't see why you have to do all that. If the sign were removed, that's it.
I know that the state of Maine has allowed signs to be put up for jake brakes.
Yeah. When you go to Frenchville, they have it. The whole town of Frenchville. Here, there, we had that. I didn't know a farmer was going in and out.
And then they go to the Frenchville town office. You ask them, who put that sign up? Nobody knows.
I know that there was a time where I was a selectman in Frenchville and that came up then as an issue, jake brakes. And the signs that were allowed, the DOT allowed them to be put up, were not considered enforceable. Okay, so you could put a sign for restriction of jake brakes, but they were not something that was enforceable in court law. So I don't know if the laws changed, but back then, that's kind of how it was.
And then they passed a normative, whatever, of the state of Maine ten years ago on this server noise. That's when that sign in Frenchville saved on this server noise. That sign was put there, nobody noticed about it, but had to be put down by the state. It's a four-by-four. And nobody knows who put it off. I've been going around trying to find some answers. Like I said, nobody knows. Nobody knows. And I said, well, I'll come to the meeting tonight and I'll find out what's gonna get done. If I have a sign to put up around Mount Lake, second diaphragm and round the trucks with jake brakes and you've got the eighteen-wheelers and...
So this is an issue more or less around your property?
No, it's on the...
On the lake, on the Lake Shore Road, all the way around?
I live on the other. This is Bullier Road, I live on.
Yeah, Bullier Road. Bullier Road runs all the way down to Sirco.
Yes, Sirco, yes. I'm on the east of there.
Yep. Okay. You know, you should probably leave your, your name and, and address or phone number so somebody can give back to you. Great. Hey, anybody else?
Maybe I could help with that? Department of Transportation will take care of science on. Not stable.
That's a stable, I believe.
Even on a stable?
The secondary stable. Okay, give me an anchor. I go to a fresh cow, nobody knows. They don't have nothing to do with it.
Paul Stee Landry, he, he was the Department of Transportation. He picked that sort of thing. He could tell. He, he could give me an answer.
And then you scare the dog, then it's nothing to do with that, so I sort of...
Well, while I'm at it, I only know two people on the board here. Mr. P. Carter and Mr. Siri. So I understand these other people here are all brand-new selectmen.
Hi, I'm Lori Maillot. I've been on since November. I'm on Lori.
I'm Daniel Daigle.
Right.
Glad to be your selectman.
Okay.
Jason Bouchette.
Right. I'd like to point out, like, the people that I have are here on vacation with their ATVs. They have no, no knowledge that, that these roads are not legal for, for ATVs. They don't know this. And most of the people going by Talbot Road, where I live, or Mount State. Now, if something should happen, some kind of an accident, that's gonna be brought out. You know? And how do we know that they're not gonna sue us for this?
The Madawaska Police Department actually just released a very nice press release.
I'm sorry, I'll get you.
I apologize. The Madawaska Police Department today actually just released a very good, informative pamphlet to discuss the ATV activity in town and how they will be enforcing it a little bit further. So they are addressing the concerns that were brought to them about the ATVs.
They haven't been enforcing it for the last two years.
Right.
I've been trying to get them to do that and they, they won't do it.
Yeah. No, they did, and it is available online and I believe they posted it on Fiddlehead Focus as well. It's a very informative article that they will start enforcing that, so.
Are you aware that these roads that have all these ATV signs on them, are you aware that they're all illegal? None of them were passed by the town vote. Due legal process. Are you aware of these things?
I'm not aware of that. I don't, I don't have knowledge of that.
So do you have any opinion on that? We're leaving ourselves wide open for a big loss when somebody gets killed. So what do you think about that?
Definitely think it's something we should discuss with the ATV club, because I know they have procedures to follow.
Yeah, I feel that we could lay an order.
This, this matter has been taken up by the previous board. Previous board, address, issues, discuss with the ATV club. So it's been, it's been before other boards.
Hello, excuse me.
Hey, folks. So. Last year, they were talking about the undesigned Talbot Road. They set up, so you people are probably not aware of what happened. They set up, because they're going way over the speed limit. So they set up one of these things that check your speed. And they found that they went at an average speed of thirty miles an hour. Okay, that doesn't sound like much. But on Talbot Road, that was designated access, over about fourteen years ago when Christine Therrien was the town manager. She, she proposed this to the town. She, you know, she was approached by the ATV club and they asked for that. So she proposed it to the town. The town voted. And then the, the Madawaska ATV Club said they would put a sign up at five miles per hour if they could get that access road. So it was voted on and it passed, five miles an hour. And after about one or two years of the sign being there, it disappeared. And everything went along pretty well again for the next eight to nine or ten years. But these last two or three years, there's a big difference in the behavior of the people. So I, I thought I would go to the police and ask them to put that five mile an hour sign back there again, hoping that they'd slow down when they saw that. And it didn't work out. And the president of the ATV club refused to put a five mile per hour sign there. And it just went on like that.
Well, Mr. Talbot, we're certainly not gonna resolve the entire situation here tonight.
No, I'm gonna...
Support from other board members.
I just wanted to give you a general thing of what's been going on the last couple of years.
Support from the board. I'd ask Gary, within the next couple of days, to get in touch with the chief of police and the president of the Madawaska ATV club. Find out where we stand legally with the laws of the state of Maine and with inland fisheries and wildlife. Get a clear answer for Mr. Talbot.
It's completely against the law.
Well, if we are against the law, Mr. Talbot, we're gonna look to bring this into compliance as soon as possible.
I have papers from, from the law library and I can show you all this stuff.
Okay, well, I'd ask Gary to look into this.
Mr. Chair, how do we?
Yep, go ahead.
So the board, I wish the police department were here tonight to speak as to, the board discusses that. The state law is clear. The municipality do not have jurisdiction to establish speed limits for ATVs on votes. That, that jurisdiction lies within the state of Maine and not the town. So whether or not the town...
Wait a minute.
Whether or not the town...
Mr. Talbot, let's, let's keep it to like two minutes, please.
We, we can add this to...
Let's get this resolved. Another two minutes. You say it's up to what? Who?
The town doesn't have the jurisdiction to establish speed limits for ATVs.
That's not what Steve Landry says. Besides that, Brian Bronson, in charge of the governor's ATV program, he told me that it's the Madawaska close that put the signs up. What do you think of that? Okay. You don't wanna hear any more? Do you people want to finish this?
Well, like Gary mentioned earlier, the previous board did work with the ATV club and there are provisions for trails using the roadway to get from one trail to the next. So I feel confident that the previous board may have done it correctly with the...
There's, there's a lot to this. It's not simple.
Right. No, I'm not saying it is. It's something we can, we can still look into to get you a definite answer. But, you know, I think if it was done legally through the previous board and the ATV club, you know, we can look in to make sure that it is, it is completed.
And none of these roads were, were, none of these signs that the roads, none, none of these roads that the signs were put up, put up on are, were done with the due legal process. None of them. Except mine. Except the road I live on.
No, we could definitely look into that and make sure that they were.
And if they, if the people don't want this road, they can buy a small piece of land or something if they want to go fast. One guy went twelve miles over the limit. I mean, twelve times over the limit. Twelve times. Okay, literally, I guess you're getting tired of hearing me, so I could go on. Simone, if you want me to.
I, we're not trying to ignore you. It's just, this is just, this, we're not trying to ignore you.
No, I understand. I don't wanna take, take it over here.
And this is a period of public participation. You, you brought this to our attention. Apparently, there's big history to this. None of us sitting here know the law. So we really need to do our homework. If we need to bring it back to the board as an agenda item, then we certainly will. But you have to give us an opportunity to do the homework.
Maybe that the six of us could get together and talk about this.
Well, we might be able to put it on the agenda.
I've been through a lot of this stuff already with the, with the state.
Well, I don't think we're gonna solve it here tonight.
No, 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 not.
It's my point. So, you know, we really just, we're not ignoring you.
Okay, I don't wanna take any more of your time, but I'll be around.
Anybody else? Yep, Paul, go ahead.
The only thing, this work notes that the black pickup coming around Keman, because there's a lot of noise on the pickup. The people complaining about that noise. I wonder if there's a possible way that that can be settled. The black pickup riding around to the Keman parking lot, it's making sounds. It's like noise. With the black pickup.
Okay.
Okay, noted, so we'll see about reaching the police department. Are we all set with Article Two?
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
Very quickly, first and foremost, I'd like to congratulate our two recently elected officers. My position was unopposed, so that was kind of like, whatever you might call it, but I'd like to congratulate Manon to Jason. I would also like to thank David Moran, our selectman, for his time. The amount of hours that he spent looking to represent the taxpayers of this town fairly. I have to appreciate his vision for the town, as well as his frustrations with the town and appreciate how frugal he was. As I serve on this board, I think you might come to the conclusion we were probably cut from the same cloth. I am not a spender. I'm here to represent the taxpayers of Madawaska and I vow to do my very best to keep spending to a minimum, especially during the times that we're living in now. Money is tight, not only tight in the community, but it's tight in the pockets of the taxpayers. So my pledge to the taxpayers of the town of Madawaska is to do my very best. And that's all of that that I can promise. Thank you.
Don't forget to thank Don Chassie also, right?
You know, we're gonna come into a, probably a, we're gonna move to Article Nine here, I believe, where we're gonna elect a chair and a vice chair. And, and I was gonna wait for that to happen before I started making some of the same comments that Mr. Daigle is making. But yes, you're absolutely correct that Mr. Don Chassie needs to be recognized. So, having said all that, are you, is there something else that you wanted to add?
I just got, have one question pertaining to being brought up to speed with particularly some of the executive sessions, which I understand can't be discussed in an open forum. But I have a list of articles that came to the board in previous meetings that I feel have been unanswered. And I'd just like to know when and how will be the proper way, procedure to address these issues.
So would this fall under Article Three?
I'm not sure. I'm relying on the chairman.
Well, I would say that that's where we should discuss that.
Okay.
So, so again, to come back to, to the thought that we want to bring Article Nine up at this point to, to elect a chair and a vice, is that something that we want to consider at this time?
If we're at Article Three and consider adjustments to the agenda, then yes, I would make a motion that we discuss Article Nine right now.
Which is where we're at. So, so at this point, then, if we're gonna consider Article Three, we have to table Article Three and move to Article Nine. Is that correct? Is that correct?
I would say that. When you consider other things, adjustments to the agenda, any additions, whatever you think you might want to add to the agenda and whatever we want to shuffle, would be part of the action of Article Three. I don't think it necessarily shuffles Article...
It is part of.
It's part of it. So if there's anything you want to swit, swap around or add to it? Sorry. If there's anything that we want to be added to the agenda? If there's anything that would need to be added to the agenda or moved, it would fall under Article Three. And Article Three would be done at that point.
All right. So any other questions there? If there are none, then let's open up the floor and entertain Article Nine, which is to appoint a chair.
I would nominate the, the chair.
Second. All in favor? opposed? Gary? And for the seat or the office of vice chair?
Nominate Lori for seat of vice chair.
Awesome.
All in favor? opposed? Very well. Congratulations, Lori.
Congratulations, though. Thank you guys for your confidence.
Okay. Any other business under Article Three?
I do.
Okay.
I just want to say that I went to the new business Saturday, SNC Homemade Jewelry &amp; More, located on Main Street, close to where GNR Computer used to be. She opened up a brand new store. It's really nice. She offers a lot of things for the beauty, so I know Lori wants it.
I know, but you speak well, I was sorry.
I went to a new little business Saturday called SNC Homemade Jewelry &amp; More. It's located right where GNR Computer used to be located. She has all sorts of jewelry in there, but other stuff as well, and she custom orders anything as well. So if anybody has a chance, go visit, support our local businesses. And my second item was, I had a neighbor who approached me. The building where the former Family Dollar spectrum, their apartment's on top. I've been noticing a lot of strange activity going there. People going in and out and whatever. These two women are scared because they come in in the middle of the night and you're sitting in their backyard and they'll disappear. They're afraid of somebody breaking into their home. So I don't know if there's any way for us to board up those apartments, are there squatters there, or are there weird things going on in that place? I mean, there are strange people coming in, especially in, and I see it from my home. Last year was coolers and it took off with the ACs and all sorts of people going in and out of there. It becomes a liability for the town if someone should get hurt. It's our property. So it's more than just the police maintaining and watching. There's actually, that needs to be boarded up. For our neighborhood and for the neighborhood as well. That's why I suggested looking into it at least.
Lori, before, before you go ahead, and I have a good idea where you're going, can I make a few comments?
Cool, yeah.
Just, 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 just before, again, I mean...
I didn't know, hurry. I didn't know, hurry.
Again, I want to congratulate our new board members. Again, I want to congratulate our new board members. You have elected to become representatives of the townspeople, and that's a tough task. You know, we're now answering to two or three bodies and not to just one. So, I congratulate you guys. I think, looking at this board, I think we have a lot of talent here. There's a lot of people that have a lot of good talent, good thoughts, and I think that we can move this town forward. I want to thank Dave Bourne, and I also want to thank Don Chassie. Both those gentlemen have served this town, this community well, countless, countless Their knowledge, their expertise, their willingness to listen, they both made excellent, excellent board members, and I want to thank them both for their service. That's it.
I'm not sure how to... I know what I want to do. Do you mind... I'm not sure how to make this motion. Like, how do I read off? Like, I have to say the statute and the... I want to make a motion that we go into executive session. It could be after Article Seven, and it would be...
So, you don't want to do this now?
No, we can... I would rather have a regular business, but I want to add it to the agenda. I just don't know, like, my motion is supposed to reference, I think, the statute. Gary, is that right?
Yes, if you have a certain specific reason... You have to ask a specific reason for executive session in the law. Title One, four, five, cite those reasons.
I'm violating the six-foot rule.
And so, you know, I'm guessing that you're interested in going into an executive session for personnel?
Yes. So, do I have to motion...
So, you need to cite Title One, it's Section Four, Five, Six, Eight. And you need to be specific about, you know, what the discussion is going to be for the executive session. If it's a personnel matter, whatever the law's... You have to kind of cite a specific reason. The law doesn't allow executive sessions just for executive session.
Prior to your motion, Lori, just food for thought, going into executive session, on my part as a selectman, is going to be extremely limited. I have opposition to going into executive session on a lot of issues that I know for a fact were discussed in executive session where it wasn't warranted. And we wonder why our taxpayers and some of our citizens get so upset and go onto Facebook and rattle off, accusing everybody from the garbage collector to the town manager and everyone in between about playing games of hide-and-go-seek. My platform, when I put my name in, be on the ballot as a selectman, one of my biggest things was transparency. I believe there's been a serious lack of transparency in the dealings of the town. I also feel that the span of time between meetings is far too great. I believe that the Board of Selectmen needs to be much more in tune with developments and progress in the community, and I believe that it's of utmost importance to keep the community well-informed as to what's going on. And the community likewise should feel equally at liberty to come into the town office and get the information that they need or get the information that they're requesting in a timely manner.
So, if I'm going to make a motion, and someone... Nobody wants a second, that's fine, then it's open for discussion?
Right.
And then we'll vote to see if we want to do this?
Okay.
If you would allow me to make the motion?
I'm okay with that.
And if you actually look at Six, Eight, number one, on the paper I gave you, that is the reason. And if we don't... You know, Dan, you're... There are some things, yes, you don't discuss in executive session, but then there are other things, too. Out of fairness to an employee or to, you know, other people involved, you don't air personnel issues out.
No, absolutely not. No, no.
So...
No, no. No, I hear you. And, you know, if I want...
So, allow me to make the motion. Let me stumble through this, and then that's fine. If there's no second, and we... And there's no... That's okay.
Okay.
Okay? So, I would make a motion that per Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Section Four oh Five, we go into executive session per number Six.
Eight. Six, Eight.
Six, Eight.
Yep.
For a discussion and consideration of appointment, assignment, duties, a motion to motion. Do I need to read the whole thing, or allow me? And we will be discussing assignment and duties and basically the board's expectation.
I second that. All in favor?
Well, you have to open it for discussion. Which Dan already did, but...
Which...
We're going to learn here, so...
So, we have to go into discussion before we go in? Okay?
No, you have to open it for discussion first. Second, is there any discussion?
That's what I'm saying. We have to have a discussion here.
Before we vote.
Before we vote.
Because he doesn't want to go into executive session maybe, or he may have a reason why he doesn't want to.
All right. So, is there any more discussion? You know, if I may, I mean, Gary would have the right to sit in.
Yes, he's going to come.
And he might, he might not. I'm not sure if he will. I am certainly with the same idea that Dan has brought up. Whether it's an executive session or whether it's not, these issues are going to get discussed, and if they're discussed openly, if he's with us, whether we have people here or whether we don't, I don't know that we necessarily need to go to an executive session. So, I will only make that comment. If the board decides or votes that we do go into executive session, I'll be fine with that. But at this point, I'm stating that I don't know that it makes a difference whether we do or we don't. We can discuss issues openly because he's going to be with us one way or the other. He's going to be there to hear what we have to say. We're not... We don't have the right to decide whether he's going to be with us or not. He's going to be there. So, if there's a thought that we're going to hold back for whatever reason, because he's in with us, then why go to executive session?
Because he basically has a right to privacy. And as any employee, I don't know what someone else might say, so I guess I'm trying to allow him that privacy. I mean, we have never... I came on in November. There was never a discussion what the duties of the town manager were. So, we were four board members pulling in separate directions. Nobody was rowing the same way. And I know there are some specific things that we would like to discuss, but then there are reasons that they can't be done that also are personnel issues that are private. So, it's mine if you don't want to do that.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that I'm open to either or.
My only thing was not honestly to create more Facebook fodder, because one thing that's said by a board member to say, okay, like, this is a procedure that we understand is supposed to be being done, and it's not, why not? He's not going to be... Feel free to explain because there's maybe another personnel reason why it's not going to be done.
But then let's do it.
You know what I mean? Like, you can't just start throwing employee stuff. You know?
You know, I personally feel that he's very transparent, only because I work closely with him. But I can understand that there are issues there, concerns there, that that's not maybe true for everybody. But anyway, I am ready to have that or continue that discussion or ready for the vote, one way or the other. I understand, Lori, and I'm ready to...
But if we want to talk about health issues, we're going to find this. Like, you can't... You don't discuss that out in the public on Facebook.
Yep. Yeah, yeah. No, and you know, you're right. It's only with the idea, I guess, that I don't see... I guess I don't know just what the questions might be. So, again, I mean, I'm always thinking that things are very transparent here, but that's not always perceived that way, so...
In any business, you never talk about employee relations or issues or objectives or goals or, you know, you guys asked me to do an employee evaluation on Gary that came in November. I had no idea what the expectations were. There were no goals in front of me to say whether he accomplished this or not, or did this or did that, and he wanted me to fill out, which would determine if he could have a raise or if he would, you know, have... It's just not right.
Right.
We have to all row in the same direction.
And so, I understand.
And in all fairness, I don't want him pulled in my directions either. You know, we have to agree on...
All right. Do we have any more discussion? Yep?
I just have a question. Gary, don't feel that we're picking on you, but I'm just curious as to where do we draw the line? You know, like, as far as expectations of the town manager, don't you think that's something that the townspeople should have some input, expectations, and knowledge of?
So, we don't need to ask that question in executive session. We don't need to have that brought up. I mean, we'll just bring up what we feel is important, right? Or what people want to have to say. I guess that's the big issue because some people want to take this to executive session.
Some of the specifics of Article Six that allows you to go into executive session involve some of these that I think should be public knowledge.
And so, what I'm saying is, why then do we go to executive session at this point?
Well, like Lori did mention, you know, if an individual has health issues, whatever the case might be, some of these things are very, very private nature, proselytism.
Well, then, you know, I guess at this point, you know, we have... We all have our thoughts about executive sessions, and I think we should... My personal thought is that we should go into executive session. And let's hear what needs to be said, and if there are things that we want to eliminate or we don't want to discuss, or if there are things that... I mean, I'm very open to Lori's motion here, and I have no problems with it. I just want to make sure...
What if I was going into that session, and I was saying, oh, my God, like, you really suck, and you haven't done any... Like, performed any of the work? You just... I'm not... That's not... That's not where I'm going. That isn't it at all. But we're all going to be expected to fill in a personnel evaluation in a short period of time, and you're going to find questions on that evaluation that... Who set the goals? How do we even know, you know? And in all fairness to Gary, I just don't think that there's... Like I said, in any business, you don't discuss personnel issues like that or personnel stuff out in...
You're correct. You should...
Yes. I'm just trying to protect him.
Well, I don't want you to ask.
Really, I mean...
I have no issue with postponing the executive session.
So, okay. So, let's try to move forward here. Is there any other discussion?
One question. How about coming back to other stuff that has come up at other meetings that are still, in my opinion, unresolved? I've got a whole list, and I don't want to take up the whole meeting tonight. I don't know if you want to set up a separate meeting for that, Lori?
Do you think...
Can we go into executive session, please?
Yeah, let's take care of that first. Let's take care of that first, Dan. Let's go to executive... Well, I want to ask for a vote to go to executive session, and then we'll issue that... Those issues that you have. But I think you should make those... I think you should make those available to this board, you know, so we can look at them, and I think maybe on the next meeting, we could look at all of them, you know, because it looks like you have a list there.
Wow.
So, anyway, all right. So, there's a vote?
You have first, and you have second, and you have a second.
Second. Right. So, all in favor? Opposed? I'm going to go into executive session at... What time is it?
Do you vote?
We just voted?
No, we voted.
Yeah. Sorry. Yes, my vote counts. Yeah, yeah, I was there. It's six oh nine. Okay. So, is it decided what room we're going to?
It's going to be fast.
Okay. How long? Good question.
No, it'll be fast.
Yep.
Well, unless they...
I would like to be included in the meeting with the police chief. Okay? Is that all right? Mention it to the town manager. Or give out the... Leave a note with our lady that's taking minutes, and she'll get the message to the town manager in the morning. Thank you. Who's on the show right now? Mr. Daigle. Daigle is the car. Are you in charge?
Oh, no, no, no. No, I'm the newcomer.
All right. All right. I want to be included in the meeting with the police chief. How's that? Eight, nine, five, three, four, two, seven. Right. Would you get a meeting? Well, if we can get him there, he can explain it, huh?
He can seem like a... He can bring it home.
Oh, yeah.
Just bring it in. I do.
A little bit.
Yeah, I do all the time. I bring it home.
Okay. If somebody's going to ask you, come out with those two handles. No? It's fire, I guess.
Ready for that?
You have a telephone where you are?
Where I am? I think I got it.
Okay. You call... I know. I'll give you my number. You can call me. We'll get you started with Mr. Landry. If that guy doesn't fix your problem, I'll call his boss in Newwood. They don't like to do these sign things here. This is handed to them from another department, so he's probably going to give you some volume.
I can write down the phone number before you serve your hand. Or you can write it down. Here you go.
I can read that.
Okay.
Is the number good? What happened to your...
I got kicked by a horse.
That one it is, huh?
Not the one I had home, no.
Oh. Not the one that you had at the mill, either?
Yeah. Oh. By the way, they're not supposed to put signs up or tape them down unless they get the mission from the town, if it was a town. But you're... State road?
I live on Long Lake.
Oh, wow. That's a town.
That's a state road.
You're in a town long ago. I'm a police officer. It's been a long time ago. You're...
Those deals be brought.
Who's more...
Yeah, you got the... I think that's what... I think that's what...
It certainly might have taken some...
They did. The state is moving all the roads, they did.
The state?
Yeah.
Yeah. We did put signs up. Route one?
No, Route One. Yes, they are.
I don't think they have one.
Yeah. They moved that... Forty roads. They went to the... Then they got two, then they got the... Like a town line there.
They go to...
Well, they got that.
There's a...
This guy, he might be...
He's got the same thing. Okay. Move for that.
Do you define a county sphere? Do you do your signs?
No, no.
No, no, I'm complaining about great. Arguing it out.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yes.
Even, even with.
My sentence under your name. Come see me. Fill out. And you'll have to, you'll have to take your name for one full year and then you can get that.
To the boarding road. ATV access.
The big problem is, most of the people don't know what the federal laws are.
Right, so many, many, many.
So, that's why they can tell you this.
Because.
How do you know, say, Gary?
Right, that's what I'm saying. He has to be a little, he buys it. Dying of honor.
There will be later.
With, uh, your death.
The town, that means they.
I have to do some research on those numbers. I think we'll get, get these bigger numbers and we can talk in the morning if you need a call.
So, you don't want that here, is it? You, you don't want these, these, these?
Drive the road and do not mistake, pick up the road, but I can't see.
Well, they have, they have a lot of strict laws and they're just supposed to do it. Stream running. But they can't do it here because there's no, there's no shoulders. There's no shoulders.
But see, a lot of just a pair of shoes right on the asphalt, then one road has a shoulder on my road.
You would drive the car, right?
I got it.
Oh, and you gotta.
And you can't do that, the state, five years. So, signed up.
They still do my, their. And the Attorney General office might do it.
I'm ready to, to somebody gets killed.
Then, then won't be, won't take long. When somebody gets killed. Both the town and the state.
Now, now, see, they're not saying nothing, we're doing the D B five, but all the access road. All A T V, A T V open to A T V.
You didn't run that night, you put it up that night.
I don't know, I go like what I should go and you go home.
Each time that's put up, they can put somebody in prison for six months and twelve thousand dollars.
And I know when you go off what I should go and you go home there, you see that sign there, right there, A T V three. All the secondary.
And they're trying to tell people, like, nobody cares.
Yeah, no, they don't care, no. The pop is, is, is with that, they won't, that's their, I said, what the hell, they need drills then if they gotta ride the road.
Yeah, they, they have to write on the road on some roads, not all the roads.
Both in the side road and on the way to A T V.
That's it, not the, they don't have the right on all the roads. Because some road is from one drill to your. No, but that's.
Yeah, that's what's supposed to be when you move to the, what I should go there. Again, you can use that road. Then you got a turn going towards Algeron, that's all there's up to A T V. And then from Searsco to the, to Algeron, that's a state road, secondary, okay? Now, the Laisse Road is open to A T V.
All the way?
All the way to the other end. And then the bigger, the open, the guy.
Oh, and they agree, I understand that.
Yeah, the bigger, they gotta move through, they come through and they come home with the Searsco. Then they go here and down.
Make the deal worse, excuse me. You remember years ago when they put the sledge shit on all the roads here? You remember that? Oh, yeah. The, the state tried to make these people shut that.
I moved the few down.
And they're doing the same thing now with the A T V. They didn't win then, they're not going to win now either.
Well, I'm going to win. The law didn't win.
People that look those signs are going to be in big trouble.
That's what I say when it is on your radio, because they don't, they don't get sued and.
The water, that's for you. If you would go, she could, they're comfortable, they're not as comfortable. And they might as well, you guys are doing it again.
And yet, the, the sign is holding that old Maro's car, right there, for ten again.
Oh, okay, I didn't.
Searsco, okay? And now the state, because they are there. He had, he cried at the state that, you know, because some, a lot of them with A T V there, they don't go again. For drill. And they, and they come down to the, you know, the A T V.
It's against the law to ride an A T V on the road. It's against the law to ride an A T V on the road. Right, but the state.
Why, it's, it's like, it, it, the state is giving them permission, so what are you going to do? It's against the law.
The state can't do that. They gotta do it, the legislature's gotta do that.
Oh, they can do that now.
Well, they're taking a chance.
They're taking a chance, that's been going on for, I'm not sure, it's been going on for a lot of years.
What do you think, what do you think is going to happen? Somebody gets killed?
They're going to sue. All right, you think what happens? They're going to sue.
They're going to what?
They're going to sue. They're going to sue the state. And who's on the bill? We are, we're paying taxes.
That's why we, we always pick that now.
Wow. If they want to do nothing.
Who won't be able to?
The state, the state are opening up that drill, you can't sit on it. Whoever's in charge in the business, whatever, who's in charge.
So I would make a motion that we...
Come out of executive.
Executive session? With no action?
And I'll say question.
With no action. Nothing else needs to be said about that. We don't need to...
No, there was no action. There's no actions.
So there's nothing else to do with that. Okay, so we came out of executive session at what? Six fifty... six fifty-three. Okay. Moving on, I think we're down to Article four. We consider the treasurer's warrants. The motion that we accept the treasurer's warrants.
Did everybody get to sign them? I...
Carol has... Carol is... Rick, take care of... Carol has all the warrants here. She brought them for your convenience.
Okay, good.
Yep.
You got... So what?
No, there was no action. There's no action.
So there's nothing else to do with that. Okay, so we came out of executive session at what, six fifty... six fifty-three? Okay, moving on. I think we're down to Article four. To consider the treasurer's warrants. The motion that we accept the treasurer's warrants.
Did everybody get to sign them?
Carol has... Carol has all the warrants here. She brought them for your convenience.
You got... So what's...
It just means a motion to accept the treasurer's warrants and then you guys can sign them.
I'll make a... Sorry. My motion to accept the treasurer's warrants.
I'll second it. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, Article four. Article five. To consider the certificates of settlement by the Board of Assessors for the former tax collector.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So each municipality under title thirty-six for taxation commits the taxes to a tax collector. It's not an old state law and the tax collector is responsible for collecting those taxes. So those taxes every year, we do the tax commandment process. They are committed to the tax collector. And when the tax collector leaves that tenure, we have to settle the taxes and recommit the taxes to the new tax collector. So the process to... Carol came to us. It took a while. She found her way in and we're very glad to have her. But now we're at the point that we have to settle the taxes for the three tax years 2017, 2018, and 2019. Releasing Dana General, the previous tax collector, of her obligation to collect those taxes. And reassigning that, and what you'll see is it will be the second part of... It will be in the next article six, is recommitting those taxes that are owed to the town to the new tax collector. So if you will, I didn't have a specific... I couldn't give you exactly what they were for each year because the number changes. It depends on the payments or not. I could only print out the actual today because today they were going to recommit to her. So if you will, you look on the certificate of settlement. There's three of them. Twenty seventeen tax year, the twenty eighteen tax year, the twenty nineteen tax year. And it basically lays out what's owed in real and personal, property tax, supplemental building interest, gives you your grant goal, and what is basically the balance that needs to be collected for each year. So with that said, does anybody have any questions about the process for settling? With the tax collector?
Any questions? So again, at this point, we're looking for a motion to... For the certificate of settlement.
For the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen taxes.
Twenty nineteen taxes. Do I have a motion? Second. Lori. All in favor? Opposed? Article six. To consider the certificates of recommitment by the Board of Assessors for Carol Albert, the new tax collector.
Okay, so part of that, the whole recommitment process is obviously you settle with your previous tax collector. You need to recommit in this recommitment amount as the aggregate for the three tax years. What's basically owed to the town for the personal property and the three taxes. But your action, today I will suggest that you make your motion. I suggest that you just read this certificate of recommitment to Carol Albert.
Okay, to Carol Albert, tax collector of the municipality of Madawaska. Herewith are committed to you true lists of the assessments of the estates of the persons therein named. You are to levy and collect the same of each on his or hers respective amount. Therein set down of the sum total of five hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. Being an yet uncollected amount of the lists contained herein according to the tenor of the foregoing warrant. So do I have a motion? So, Mr. Daniels, second. Anno. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried.
So what you guys need without having a bunch of papers to sign.
Article seven. To consider the authorization of a finance director as signatory to the town's bank accounts. Dan, I need a motion.
Can I?
Yep.
So any bank account is two signatories? In Madawaska tradition, it's always been the town manager and finance director slash tax collector. This action here, you have a letter that was included. There was a typo in the previous one, I noticed. I've just changed it a little bit to reflect that. Took out wording. So your motion to be that Carol would be designated by you to be the co-signatory to the town's bank accounts where we have our E U R base, which is T V. Ah, excuse me, the town trust.
So are you asking me to reword this, to add Carol's name on there, or are we all right with the motion as...
I would just say the motion would authorize Carol for the signatory. And after we're done, we'll have you guys sign this here.
I make a motion to authorize Carol as the signatory for the town's bank accounts.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Article eight. Are we all set to go discuss Article eight at this point? Or would anybody want to consider tabling this for the next meeting, or are we still good to go? Next meeting, I'm assuming is going to be sometime next week. And I just want to make sure that we're running on time here a little bit. So we're five thirty. Where are we? Oh, so we still have a half an hour.
As long as I'm at the bakery at five.
All right, Article eight. Board members' planning discussion. So this article is basically to ask the board members a short brief on what they would like to accomplish, what some of their goals might be in a relatively short amount of time. So that we as board members can... And I believe this to be like marching orders as much for me as for anybody else. I mean, if there are some real important issues here, I want to be the first to take them up and I want to be the first to help put them across and make sure that they get done. So I guess Lori, since you're sitting across from me, I would ask maybe that you could start.
Okay, so I guess one of the things I would like to see on a future agenda is us to discuss what the board bylaws are and consider, because I've heard that it's been considered before and never followed through, whether we need a charter, whether we just need to look at the ordinances. There are some that may, in regards to the board and how we operate over the years, just may not be right anymore. So I want to review those. I did ask Gary for a copy of whatever was available for us. We may not need to create a charter, but I want us to review that. It's something I honestly feel we should get the minute we start on the board. And just make sure that, you know, we all feel like that document is correct and make sure we're actually following it. I think we need to get, you know, over the years, the boards and managers, and things get lost a little bit. So I still make sure that we're actually doing what we're supposed to. My other big one is, and I'm not picking on anyone in particular when I say this, but there are many times I want to work on the budget. We have to work on this year's budget. But there are many times that I hear, as I'm sure all of you, cut, cut, cut. Get rid of this department. Change this. Why is the school budget this? Why is, you know, why are we running, you know, this department at this amount? You know, there's all these things that get thrown around. And there are consequences to eliminating a department. There's no easy fixes for this budget. And some of these things that are suggested, I think, are might be near impossible to accomplish. But I think that it would be a good idea to have maybe a small group of people. There used to be a resource committee back in the day, for example, that did some research on whether they should close a library and have it at the school. And there are security issues with that. And they did research on whether they should consolidate the two school buildings. And, you know, it's easy for someone to come and say, oh, we don't need a police department. Have the sheriff come. Well, that's a big... You know, there's some big negatives to that. So I feel like maybe we should have this resource committee resurrected. And a group of us and townspeople and people that want to be involved should get together and actually explore some of the suggestions that are just coming out from the public and either say, I mean, yes, this might be feasible to help us balance this budget, or no, and here's why. And have some facts that we can actually bring back to the people and say, you know, and the case may happen that the budget's the budget. And there's no, you know, three mills to cut backwards. And there's no... But I feel like we need to work on proving that one way or another. And we need to give some credence to what people are asking of us. So I would like to see us discuss maybe on another agenda revitalizing the resource committee or call it a budget advisory committee or... Because you cannot expect the finance committee to come in and us as new board members and sit here and say, yeah, we're going to cut three mills. My gosh, you're cutting... You're limiting three departments. What do we know about that? You know, it's just, it's not feasible. So I feel like at least if we had a committee together that could really do some homework and present us with things. So those are my two big things, I guess. Sorry, it was a brief.
Anno, do you want to go next?
I just would like to see if we can... I don't know how recent the personal handbook has been updated. That has to be a constant working addition because some things change every day, every year, different issues. And another thing is a way to encourage small businesses to come. Not looking at big block stores, those won't come. But somehow an incentive for people to open up little businesses. Because eventually they'll look for maybe one or two people. And maybe we'll have a downtown, we'll be aligned again. You know, look at maybe what really this town needs for like a wander map business. We have in the wander map. So maybe that's something somebody could look into. But somehow we need to find something to revitalize our town. Not just infrastructure aesthetics, but businesses that bring taxes and support people. That's my issue.
Dan?
Whether we like to face it or not, this town, this entire country is in a financial crisis. My platform, when I put my name on the ballot to run for selectman, was that any unnecessary spending would be top priority for me. And people will ask, well, what's your criteria for measuring how necessary something is? I've always conducted my own personal business, return on investment. It's that simple. Running any business, every time you invest any amount of money, you have to revisit it periodically and see what the return on investment is. And I don't think this town should be exempt from that measuring stick if we're to survive. Again, the board of selectmen and the town manager have come under fierce attack, accusing them of not bringing new businesses to town. That is easier said than done. I'm of the mindset that an equal amount of effort in whatever form should be to help out the existing businesses so that they don't go under. Economic development plays a large role in this. Again, we need to be very proactive in these areas. Another sore subject in my mind is the tax issue with Twin Rivers. I believe this needs to be revisited at all costs. If my figures are correct, it leaves this town in excess of one point five million dollars short to meet the budget. Right now, our roads in Madawaska are in disarray. And it's just like a roof that's leaking. It doesn't look all that bad. And you put it off and you put it off. Five years later, you peel that roofing back and half your roof is rotted out. And the project becomes a nightmare. And that's exactly what's happening to our road systems in Madawaska. I want to commend Kevin and his group because I ride on it every day. They repaired a short section on the Gangrel Road. That is ready for paving. These are the kind of things that we need to look at. Because if we don't have roads in Madawaska, businesses aren't coming here. If they have to come here, we're not horse and buggy. So those are my big ones.
Well, now I got to follow all of that, so. My biggest goal is infrastructure. You know, like Dan says, we need to make sure that our roads are paved, that we have a beautiful town for people to come into and make this town a place that our kids and our grandkids can be proud to come back to. When I left Madawaska and I started working in Portland, everybody was like, oh, you're from the county. And they had this high regard for people in the county and for the towns up here. And I want all the townspeople not only to be proud of their town, but to be proud of any board that's sitting and their town manager and everybody involved. We need to work all together. And that's my goal here, is to bring the town together, whichever way we can.
Of course, I've got a few items here. One is that I think we've really neglected to reach out on a state level. We don't have good representation or we're not privy or we don't have access to our representatives enough. I think we need to certainly widen that scope and reach out to our state representatives. I think we need to request that they come. They can certainly look at what we've done, what we're doing, and then maybe help us with some future projects that we are looking at. Tourism is a big, big issue for us. And it's becoming bigger and bigger and bigger every day. For some, that's good. For maybe a few, that's not so good. But snowmobiling is a big, big, major activity here. ATV is a big activity here. Viking is going to become a big activity here. Skiing, Four Seasons. Those are all assets that we have here that we need to capitalize on. I've been, in my history, in my work history, I mean, I've shipped people all over the world. It's time now that I started thinking about focusing, bringing people here. We have something here. We have something that's attractive enough for them to come. So I'm looking to develop that in as many ways as I can. You know, sometimes we think that some of these things are impossible. But you look at Joe and Diane Arshano and what they've done. You know, it's phenomenal that these two people, just by something that they enjoy, which was biking at that time, brought this on to this town. And for many of us, we considered that to be just a thought. It wasn't only because we didn't understand, but look at it today. You know, and they didn't look for funds. They didn't look for handout, you know? They found their own way. And I think, I think those opportunities are still there. And I think with COVID-19 at this point, I think a lot of people are looking to move out of the cities. And if we can find a way to move them back home, and I'm saying back home because you might find some, you might find some of the odd people that are just going to point a finger at the map somewhere to get away from the city and find their way here. But for the folks that I'm more interested in, it would be the people that have been here that have left to find a way to get them back. And I think we need to address that, even at the school level. You know, go out, find work. It's possible today that you might bring that work back here. And I'm sure many of you already have experienced that, that people are coming back. They're working, they're bringing their work here. You know, I have a daughter that does that. I know a good friend that does the same thing. So those are real big issues. I want to create a manageable budget. I want to create a manageable budget. I mean, and the budget here is a major issue and, and it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of attention. It's not easy, but we're gonna have to address it and, and we have to address it very soon. And I hope that we can come to a compromise that works for everybody, but, but certainly the budget is, is a big issue. Twin Rivers is a big issue. And I'm gonna make it public tonight that, that we ask for a meeting with Adam Lee. I want to sit down with Adam and we need to discuss this openly out of the courts so that we can get to a, a reasonable relationship between Madawaska, the town, and Twin Rivers. So I'm making it public this evening that I'm asking Adam to come sit with us and discuss this issue without having to go back to court with this. Last, um, and this is probably just, just dreaming, but I'd like to find a, a site, a location, an IT location, so that when people do make their way back here, whether they're vacationing or, or they're looking to make their way back home, that they can work. Whether we find a, a, a location here in, in the school system, the school buildings, or something within the town's property, uh, but a designated area with high-speed internet access and, and privacy that they can actually sit down and work. Some, for some people, it's no big deal to do this at home. It, it does work for a lot of people at home. But if you've got family and kids and, and, and you're having to manage what you're trying to do and you're managing little kids running around you, I mean, it, it just doesn't work. So, so once you designate that area and you have an area that, that's known for folks to come back here and have a chance to sit down and do their work, and I believe, and I think, Justin, maybe you see this as better than I do, that if we can find a location and, and, um, you're already putting some of those issues to rest, but I want to make it bigger. I want to get it so that, you know, you want to come set up your company or you want to work for somebody else, but you want to live here. And, you know, the critical factor is we want them here. That's a big issue for me. So those are the, some of the, the issues that I have. Okay, so having said that, is there anything else about this article that we want to discuss?
I would just, I would just, you know, make it clear that any examples that I used were not to, uh, you know, eliminate a department or come after the school because that, you know, can tend to, I just, the resource committee did a lot of those things and I'd like to redid it what they did.
Um, just.
Do I get a chip?
So of course, I'm getting a chip. Sorry.
I, I appreciate all of your comments and all, um, and the total vision comments that I can get behind. I do share a lot of your, your visions. While it might always seem that way because of our busy work life, uh, that is the path that we, the vision we're working towards. And, um, Madawaska, you know, has always been a service center community. Madawaska was a retail hub, you know, store to retail, um, the more that's going. It's not just Madawaska that's experiencing that, it's everywhere now. So we have to kind of reinvent ourselves, recognize the strengths. There are some broken proof that we can pull off, such as, such as our tourism that we can focus on and see if we can grab some more of that tourism that comes up here, figure out a way to lead the town better. I think that we have a lot of resources here that we're underutilizing. When I say that, Keith and I, um, you know, we talk often, Keith is our economic guy, is that we have a lot of organizations in this town. We need the historical, the Brice, senior center, and that's a columnist. It goes on. The four corners. I'm missing so many, I'm sure. But all these organizations exist. They're doing their own thing. And a lot of them are pulling from very few resources, uh, which the most important is people power, manpower. I've just sat down with a lot of these organizations. Some of them have new blood, some of them have old blood. People that have been pulling the weight and having a hard time recruiting the youth help and volunteerism is down. And so I think that we all, as a society, from my observation, we're also crazy busy with our lives today. Kids is making, and that's going, and it doesn't let us rest. And we forget about everybody else in our community. We forget about all the other organizations, okay, that if they would synchronize somewhat to some extent, that those, you could pull that, use those resources together and these people would forge relationships. They pull our resources and ideas could be born between themselves. And so our vision, we've been working towards a vision for, you know, with the downtown and program. And our goal is to get to Dan's comments about a way to be able to measure metrics, have, measure progress. You have a plan, here's what we're gonna try to do, but you're not gonna do that for five years if it doesn't work, right? So, you know, our discussions and even having early discussions about, you know, having a programming-centric group that we can build where we can pull people from these different organizations, okay? Come up with brainstorming ideas for things that we can do in our town, okay? I'm not talking about spending, having concerts, venues, very expensive things. Just stuff that each and every organization can showcase what they do to the public in our downtown so that the merchants that we have or these people that thinking they might be able to locate into our downtown could pull from. And, and those, our vision, I guess, is that whatever we do for programming, it needs to be, when we come up with an idea, I don't know what it is, for what can happen in our town. You need to say, okay, is it gonna meet six or seven or eight of our ten goals? Is it bringing seniors and with children together in our downtown? Is it causing people to come into our downtown and spend money? Is it making our town downtown more vibrant or whatever, not just downtown? And I think if we can pull these people together, these organizations, okay, we're gonna succeed as a community. And that's where we really want to go, okay? There's a lot here. We talk about trying to attract other people, other businesses from the way. And that's something that we should take our eye off. But I think there's more here than we realize and outside of our municipal boundaries as well. Where we can be that place where people can come here and find something to do, take an opportunity to take advantage of resources that we might have, like Doug was moving to, and any other thing that we can dream of, okay? It's all possible if we're working together. And that's my pledge to this board, my pledge to this community. Thank you.
Very good, very good, very good. Is there any other discussion about this article at this point? If there's none, then I'm gonna be, um, I guess one, one, one point of interest that, that I'd like to make is that I, I think as a board, we should all have maybe a copy of the Robles' Rules just to familiarize ourselves. I think it would be important that we would all have a copy. Before I adjourn, I would look for a meeting, our next meeting, uh, which I'm thinking we're trying to do next week.
I have some of this to take care of. I think we should probably do it next week.
Away for a few days.
I'm away for a few days.
What's a few days?
Uh, I'll have to double check the dates.
So, so today is Tues- Tuesday, so, so, so we're talking at least a week from today. So Wednesday, Thursday, next week is what we're talking about?
I'm thinking right five, six, seven, I'll be away. That's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We shoot for Tuesday or we shoot for the following. Well, you know, we typically like to get a, a agenda out a week in advance.
Can we go two weeks?
I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to go past the ten to take care of this business.
Um, you typically like to get them out a week in advance or is it a requirement?
There's no requirement, but we're trying to be consistent in, in getting the agendas out typically. We have a meeting that falls out of what we consider a regular meeting, emergency meeting. We'll put a little bit more notice to the press just to let them know, okay, if you get it out there, that we're having a special meeting, emergency meeting. If there's nothing that says we couldn't have this meeting next Monday or Tuesday, we might just have to kind of push, push it out a little harder so that people are aware that we have something that is posted for, with the meetings.
And when is our budget discussion, we have to start all over again? So we should start soon.
So, you know, I think that we were all waiting for revenue figures to come in, come to state and in. The revenue forecast the committee was set a week, uh, the end of July, the beginning of August. And we did follow up. Um, we haven't met, last week we had not given that. Main Revenue Services waits for, our State Treasury Office waits for, uh, Forecasting Committee a week so they can give a revenue projection for the next coming year, where the state's made this year. And that revenue forecast is what determines the amount of money dispersed to the municipalities. It's supposed to be 5% in sales tax. It, that's been chipped away at in the last decade. It's working its way. The legislature and the governor have been working towards inching back to 5%. We made some pretty good efforts last year in our advocacy and our involvements. We go into hearings in Augusta, fight to get back to 5%. We moved the needle. Super proud of that. I'm super proud of my colleagues, the, the work that we've done, hounding our legislative officials and going to meetings and working with MMA and the legislative politics to get revenue sharing back to the statutory 5% sales tax. We're not there yet. February, Revenue Service posted a nice forecast for us, for the towns. I mean, only to have that COVID hit and, and to get notified that please don't put any stock into that number we sent you, which would have given us about $277,000 more from previous year. So for, I guess my point is, uh, yes, I think we need to start our budget discussions. I've been working on that, the budget. Sometimes we now have hard numbers where we wouldn't have because we're still waiting in the process that I've been able to plug into the budget. I'm, I'm ready. Not as far as the expense side goes, I don't have the full revenue picture for you yet.
To be fair, well, Gary, we would have to, and I certainly don't want to waste department heads' time, but, and, and we don't have to go line by line and you don't have to read, okay, $200 for this and like we did. But we really would have to start, we'd have to go over those expenses again with them, with the department heads here and allow them to have those questions answered. So it doesn't matter if we don't have the revenue picture. We have, like, we're starting over, so, you know, we should do those, a couple of those meetings, get that done so they can ask their questions. And then we'll talk about revenue and what we're gonna cut and where, but they need the initial run through.
Yeah, no, I, I'm totally, uh, and pretty much ready to go on that anytime. So, right now, under the emergency order, we can operate under a continuing resolution. Basically operating on the last year's budget until the new budget is passed by the townspeople. The executive order also allows the board, council, like for the government, to adopt the last year's budget essentially. Commit taxes without having to go to town. It's not something that I advocated before. Uh, but that is something that is a tool that was made to build, okay? I'm not doing my job if I don't do that. So, yeah, I, I think we can start the budget process again. Timeline wise, you know, I don't think we can wait too long before we can commit our taxes. And I think October would be the very latest to commit taxes. We get friends rolling back in. And we need to know. We need to know what we're doing. So from a timeline standpoint, I think, you know, we're just a board. The finance committee would be mental for that. I would be, have a couple of very lengthy marathon kind of meetings to go over the budget together, uh, to get it done and to get it ready for the townspeople. Sometimes in late, mid-August is going to work, but sometimes in August, we can get that done. And by that time, I think we'll have a revenue that, remember, we can utilize. I think revenue is important. I, it's always a projection, the revenue side of things, okay? Much like the property taxes are, is a projection of revenue. But if something happens to the tax base in, in that assessing year, that revenue can quickly go away, can evaporate. So I, I, we can sit and make, make assumptions about revenue and say, wow, we're gonna play it safe and we were supposed to get $677,000 and more. Hopefully, I bet you it's a number, I don't remember the number by heart. Let's only put in for half of that, okay? Well, the, the flip side of that is if you can't, if you can't minus the expense side, then you're jacking up the overhead for that loss of revenue. And so I, I don't, I'd like to see the board have the benefit of being able to make a informed decision where you're not bringing up the overhead unless you have to, that's so it's, you know, so choose, that's the way it goes. And on the flip side, if we under-project our revenue, that, it's a fun balance. If we over-project our revenue, sorry, to try to hold the money, but then it doesn't come in, you know, this year and it ends up hitting the fund balance, which we can't afford. So that's kind of the discussions I think that we should be having. I think we'll get to work on the budget process pretty soon.
Yeah, either way, we need the initial expense run through so that they understand what each line item is for. You know, like we've already gone, Doug and I have already have benefited of that.
And more so now than before, we actually have the year-end financials that are already there. We're, we're going to review that. So you're gonna have that much more information to help you guide you in the decision.
So what you're proposing is to, 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 to start, uh, looking at, at doing budget meetings separate from our regular meetings?
I think it's going to be, we typically use a, a three or four meetings for budget. We make our first pass and then we go back and look at this and we do one or two or three departments, depending on the size of the budget, each department. That could take a while. We do it that way. And I know in the past, we did a marathon kind of meeting on that. God, what, what day was it? But it was.
Saturday.
What was that?
Saturday workshop.
It was a Saturday workshop. We didn't, and it was a lot to ask of the board, but we've got a lot done. If the board's willing to take, to take that on that way.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna be pushed into that direction anyway. I mean, at this point, we need to, we need to get, uh, we need to take a look at this.
It's our job to do, so we have to do what we're here to do.
So, so are we, I mean, we're getting beyond what we're talking about here for the.
Well, I wanted to know if budgets were in the next agenda or if we were doing a separate meeting. That was my point. Because you can't do a budget meeting or have that in an agenda without Dan.
Right, yep, I understand, I understand.
That was my point of, of that question.
I think that we make, my opinion is if we could have our next meeting just to take care of regular business, probably gonna pick up some more between now and, I, I've got to look to see what we have. There might be things that slide in last minute that we may have to act on, but, uh, I said the business. But I think that we could focus on budget and not let it be part of another meeting where we're kind of rushed to get through and people, uh, easier, uh, might be. But again, everybody's got busy schedules. We either, in a nutshell, take three to four meetings, depending on how it goes, or three departments at a time, or we have a couple of marathon-style meetings and we just get done.
I propose we do a regular meeting on Tuesday and then we see if we can get. I propose we do a regular meeting on Tuesday, and then we see if we can get everybody to come for the day on Saturday.
Always, Eric.
Well, no, I just, I'm just, you know, whatever.
He's gonna be gone for four or five days.
He's here on Saturday.
Let me verify the dates.
Because I'm okay with that. I mean, whatever day...
We have to do it. I mean, we can't, you know, it's crappy, but, I mean, any does not...
Okay, so you're proposing that we have a meeting Tuesday, a regular meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we can't wait till the end.
We're okay with that.
And I don't want to have our second meeting without Dan already. Oh, it's all right. You're gonna be a thorn in my side. I'm gonna be, I told you, I'm gonna sit right next to you once we hit the council chambers, and I'm gonna smack you.
Tuesday, Tuesday, Tuesday.
You're gonna smack me back.
Five thirty? I'm assuming we're gonna be holding our meetings here too for a while?
I think that's gonna be the norm for a while. It seems to work good. People have enough space here, and my apologies for posting our own location. I pulled the, sorry, I pulled the template, if you will, as Fred uses the agenda, and I forgot to change the location. So it went out, it got posted, and I was like, oh, lost it. And Louie reminded me to say, can you move it? I think if this works, it's probably the best venue for us for the foreseeable future.
Any other business? Need a motion to adjourn?
Before you go, before you adjourn, I've got signatures for you. I have some stuff, bylaws. I have some handouts. I also have some information here. On August 19, there's an elected officials workshop that the committee puts on periodically throughout the year. On August 19, it's Zoom. I need to register anybody who's interested. It's highly recommended. You can come to the town office, and you can take part in that there, or you can do it from the comfort of your own home, I believe, if you have a computer and all that stuff. So let me know if you're interested, subscribe into this workshop. Four thirty to seven thirty, yeah, August 19.
I got a lot out of it, so if it's something you guys can be, I don't know.
I've got the information here. When you guys can sign this stuff.
Yep. I got a motion. Okay, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned.